Okay, folks, we'll start in about a minute. The recorder is on, so don't tell any dirty jokes.
This gentleman would like to know, there's a motorcycle that's been there for 10 years. You know what's going on with that?
So last I had checked, which was when I first came back, there has to be a proper owner who ever had the last title of it. I tried to reach out, nothing, so I guess the next step would be talk to the AIDS office. Have maybe charged valor and then banned them all.
Yeah.
And then sell it to the burrow dogs and it all.
Yeah.
Maybe I asked them.
Does it run at all?
I don't know. I remember when we were in the old building, it brought it over. So that worked through that, Brian took it over and started since it probably would have stopped. It's a good one. Probably get something they're in at some point. So I'll do a podcast plus take it down tomorrow. I'm not sure about abandonment papers and how that works.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, folks, it is 7 o'clock on Thursday night, August 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. This is the rescheduled regular meetings of Myersdale Borough Council. We had to move the meeting. Our Tuesday night, we weren't going to have a forum. We just vacations and other commitments, so that's why we're meeting tonight. It was advertised properly by Patty. So with that in mind, we will rise for the flag ceremony, and Counselor Jenny will offer the opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the founding United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening, to work for the borough's best interest. Guide us in all our decision making. Thank you, amen.
Amen, thank you. Patty, the roll call, please.
Mr. Ackerman here.
Mr. Baer here.
Mr. Baker is absent. Mrs. Nagy is absent. Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mrs. Canaryum here. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Solicitor Valentine.
Via phone.
Mayor Smith is absent. Olivia Baker is absent. Officer Craig is here, and Brian Ryberg is absent.
Okay, I had received a call from our mayor. He is tied up with business in the northern part of the state with gas companies, so he won't be here this evening. And Terry Baker is tied up with business. They're working on a line which was exposed during the flood. They're doing something with that. So if any way possible, Terry will come in a little bit later, but I don't think Shane will be here. So the first thing we have to do, and I'm going to let Mark Valentine speak, there's a little confusion over the motion to alter the June 10th, 2025, meeting minutes. And I think we're going to have to rescind a motion that was made at the end of last month's meeting. Mark, would you take it away and explain what's going on with this, please?
So there was a motion made the last meeting to correct the minutes. And the issue is, you're only legally allowed to correct minutes with respect to grammatical errors or if there's a situation in which something was placed in the minutes that either didn't happen or it wasn't in the minutes and it did happen. We are not allowed to alter what was said in the minutes. The minutes have to reflect the same thing that you would get with if you're recording it, which, you know, Patty does record the meeting, but you're not allowed to give your interpretation or viewpoint on those minutes. When Patty did the original minutes, it gave the statements that were made. It did not say that it was alleged or that it was factually correct or incorrect. It just said the statements that were given. So by law, and I've looked into this enough, by law, we have to rescind that motion because the motion to approve or to alter that was actually not. If we would follow through that and you would approve it tonight, that would be an illegal motion.
Thank you, Mark. So what are you asking us to do at this point? Make a motion to rescind?
You need to make a motion to rescind the motion to correct or to whatever the meant, I guess, believe the word was, the minutes from last meeting. And then you can accept those minutes by motion and approval in their original form.
And that was, we're talking about the June 10th, 2025 meeting?
I believe that's correct. You have to make sure Patty that that is the correct.
Yeah, that's what's on the agenda. So does anybody have any questions on what happened at the end of the meeting? A request was made to add the word alleged into, Brian, with the rights.
I do want to also say, just so that we're all aware, I'll take credit for not catching this. That motion should not have been made as it was done to begin with because the member who made that, that was a conflict because of the nature of the statement that was made. So I would just say in the future, all the, or all the council members need to be quite aware that we can't, you can't make a motion in which you have a conflict or a direct interest in. So that, you can't do that because what will happen is the correction of it is whatever motion you made would have to be undone anyways. And it might seem okay, but if it was a motion for funding that was immediate and had a direct impact on something to the community or otherwise, it could have a severe impact on whatever you're trying to help. So just for the future, we just need to make sure that we're being very safe and accurate with that.
Well, and then to try to go into executive session yet, which would have been highly inappropriate, at least we start that.
Yeah, and executive sessions, they are for very specific purposes. It has to be litigation that is either pending, which means it is getting filed and you know it's coming. You have written, you know, some type of warning with that or that litigation that is ongoing or employment related. There's a lot of stuff people try to put in executive sessions that legally is not allowed to be there. And executive sessions are not too high conversations. It is not to protect any information like that. It's supposed to protect attorney-client privilege, medical, like in other words, like medical record privileges and employment privileges in which there's certain information about employees and employee records that are not public. So that's the nature of that, and we do need to adhere to that too because the courts, the appellate courts and the state have been cracking down on municipalities for abusing executive sessions in the last while. So we just need to be careful with that.
Okay, so then could we have a motion? Yes.
Okay, I was at the meeting for this, but I wasn't at that June 10th meeting. So I would have to abstain, right?
I don't think you want to.
You would not have to, if you were not at the meeting, you would not have to abstain from the rescinding motion, but you should abstain from the approval of the motion of the original minutes.
Okay, just getting this straight.
Now Patty wanted to ask a question on this yet.
The meeting that we're talking about, the rescinding, wouldn't that be the July 8th meeting where they made the motion to?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yes. Yeah, the remarks were made at the June meeting.
Yes.
June 10th.
And then July 8th is when the motion was made to add that alleged.
Correct.
That's the motion.
Way to catch it, Patty.
Okay. So could we have such a motion?
I'd make the motion.
Ron, Tom, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Are you voting?
This is the, just the, sorry, this is the, I agree. This is the one for the July.
Okay, so that's a unanimous vote. Basically, we're going to reinsert, I'm sorry, we're going to take out the alleged that was requested to be put in there. Is that right?
You're striking out that motion.
Correct. So the minutes will stand as you had presented them. Okay. Now, we have two other sets of minutes to approve. July 8th was a regular meeting, and July 29th was our meeting primarily for discussing the family bathroom and other items as far as handicapped accessibility in this building. So I read through both of the minutes. I could find no errors. But counselors, do you have any corrections or additions to either the July 8th or July 29th meeting?
July 29th meeting, I did vote against putting it in the current restroom. It's not that I'm not against the family restroom, but I don't know if we can put that in because I stated at that time that I agreed on the family restroom, but I didn't agree with the location in the women's room. And that's not stated in here like it stated the previous vote that I voted on. It says those casting no vote were in favor of family restaurant, just not in the MA office space. So is it possible to get that in the vote to pass?
Let me get the minutes here. Where exactly are you looking, Jenny? Was it the end of the meeting?
No, this is the 29th meeting. It's like, let's get.
Mark, are you able to listen to this? Are you hearing it? Can everybody hear Mark okay? Is it loud enough?
I'm down where Patty signed on the borough secretary. It's right before the adjournment.
Okay, Mr. Ackerman, roll call vote.
Okay, and then you go down through, and at the first vote, I voted yes. And then there was a note stating that those casting no vote were in favor of family restaurant, just not in the former MA. And then in the next, I voted no, but I would like to have it stated, as I said at that meeting, that I just wasn't, kind of reverse of what you said from the first. Does that make sense?
You're in favor of the family restaurant.
Asking for clarification of how she voted.
I mean, don't change the minutes, but like, they put a clarification.
And it's a clarification, like you verbally said that, right? Like it's like you said. Okay, as long as she said it out loud, that's a clarification. In other words, it's what she said, and it's because of her vote. She can't ask for that to be put in. And then council has the right, of course, to approve or disapprove of that. But just because that's how it goes, but what I get that is, that's different than what we just dealt with because she's not interpreting her own vote. She's actually clarifying that she said that.
Are there any other additions or corrections? What we'll do is we'll have one motion to, when we approve the minutes, that'll include your clarification. Is there anything else to be concerned about in the minutes? I read them, and, okay then, could we have a motion to approve both sets of minutes? The July meeting minutes, two of them. And in that approval will be the clarification which Jenny requested on the final vote regarding the placement of the family bathroom. Is there a motion? Okay, Jenny and Ron, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the finances, Terry's not here. Patty, could you just read the amount? I guess I could do it. Just the amount of the general fund?
General fund's at $180,704.98. And he owes us the bills. General fund bills were $6,840.94.
Okay. Could we have a motion to accept that report and pay the bills, as listed? Clarence? Tom? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Patty, do you want to go ahead and take this police pension plan, investment policy funded? Do you want to give a report on that? You seem to know more about that than the rest of us.
Yes, the council has to decide if the investment plan that the Somerset Trust is currently doing is satisfactory and approved for you to sign that. They also have to, let's see, about contributions, and they have to put down who all of the signatures would be. Currently, it's the president, council, finance chairman, and the borough secretary, any two of those.
When we have our auditing report, do they review this also, this pension plan?
Yeah.
So they're comfortable with everything? Do we want to make a motion just to go ahead and renew this Somerset Trust is good?
We don't really have a special choice.
Right.
I know that, I mean, we're already logged into that, so it's, I hate to say the word fromality on a vote, but the borough's already logged into that and the funds have to keep going forward.
So could you want a motion, Patty, that we just approve the police? This is just for the police pension plan?
And then you have to sign it, the signers?
Go ahead and sign it and just to continue it on for another year. Is there a motion? Thank you, Jenny and Clarence and Tom thirded it.
And I abstained because I'm getting a penny from the police.
Oh. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous with the notation that Ron is abstaining. Brian isn't here tonight, Brian Ryberg. To replay, there's a broken decorative street lamp up on Main Street. The cost is $1,668. We just got this information about a week ago, and we did not want to authorize this until council could review it and approve it. Now Patty, you said that the cost could conceivably go up tomorrow.
Yeah, it could go up tomorrow.
But we could ask them that.
All of them, maybe they.
See if you could just get it to that same price. But I would urge council to, after appropriate discussion, to go ahead and approve this. I think we want to get our street light fixed, and then there would be an extra cost. We'd have to get Leroy Cook, electrician, to come in and wire it in. So questions or discussion on this?
Why is it broken?
A state snowplow hit.
Insurance covered it.
Well, the state said they couldn't, we couldn't prove it was them, but we're pretty sure.
Why don't you replace it? But then we can send a letter to the state telling them they hit it.
That's fine with me. Brian had a discussion with the state. Patty, were you in on that?
No, I'm missing in on that.
And there was, well, I don't want to paraphrase what Brian said, but we feel pretty certain it was the state hive plow truck, that blade that sticks up in the air. But how you prove it? Unless there'd be a video. So I would say let's just at least approve moving forward and getting the thing ordered and replaced, and then we can send them a bill or just fight with the light.
Turn it into orange. Turn it into the purple.
I don't think we should, the more little, this is in my opinion, a little claim.
And the $1,600.
Well, but when you add them up, it's not, it's not, it's not the number. It's not the amount, it's the number. And we already have had a couple of things going on here. We ran into up to Methodist Church. We had a couple, maybe four or five little tiny claims. We got booted. So it's up to council. I wouldn't vote to turn this in. I think we should just pay it because of that reason, but I could be wrong.
Well, do we even know what her deductible was?
Patty, Mike, I.
I think it's like.
I mean, I know Patty would, if anybody, but I'm just saying.
It's like $1,000 or $1,500 yesterday.
I think you did, you looked and told me it was $1,500 when we discussed this before council, so.
That sounds right, too.
Yeah.
I made a motion that we replace it.
Thank you, Jenny and Ron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Under the finances. Okay. First off, we are going to, I thought council decided in September. I think it's the 4th. It was a Thursday night. We're going to reinstate our police personnel and finance committee meetings, at least for that one night, because we want to do the budget. Dan's going to record it. It's a finance committee meeting, but if anybody's interested, and it'll be all open session, how we sit down and come up with our budget for the next year of 2026. So I'll just announce that. Like I say, Danny indicated that he would be available to put it on YouTube from start to finish. So I think we discussed that, and everybody's on board. And if we're going to do the finances, we may also do the police and personnel also. So we'll meet at 7:00 PM on the 4th, and then our regular meeting will be 9:00 and 9:00. And the only other thing, did Karen ever pick up that information she requested? She wanted this right to know and all this information?
She was to come in and review it, but she wants an electronic copy. Mark says we can't give her.
You can't? The information that is requested is not, and it doesn't matter if it's a council member or who it is, is not supposed to be removed from the office.
And that was how many pages, 250 pages?
Yeah.
Two hundred.
Can you guys hear me? Like, that doesn't matter if it's electronic or paper. Electronic inherently means it is portable and is removed. And the whole reason why that stuff is protected is so that there is no issue with accounts. And if that, that happens, that happens fairly often, that they get messed up and use, you know, get account information, et cetera.
See, this is what I said at the last meeting, the request, what it cost us, and I was told it was stupid, but Patty had all this time involved, 250 pages, ready to review, and they haven't been picked up yet. And it was, we were told it was urgent. I just was checking on that, Patty. Is there anything else under the finances? Okay, guests, Kayla Robertson, come on up.
Thank you. So I'm Kayla Robertson. My husband and I grew up in Myersdale. And after living out of state for 15 years, we're excited to be back, back in the Dale. We're a homeschooling family. We've always homeschooled our kids. And the area that we lived in West Virginia, it was a little bit bigger, but we attended homeschool co-ops. This gave us an opportunity to come together with other homeschool families that our kids could socialize together, but also do classes that normally is kind of difficult to do when you just have, you know, a parent and a couple of children. For instance, my boys really like gym class, but it's very hard to have a gym class when it's just me and my two boys. So I've been asked multiple times by multiple people if I would be starting a co-op. I kind of waited a little bit. We were in a big transition here, but I would like to start that co-op. We'd like to start small. This would be a nonprofit group. I would have to charge the families a small amount of money just to buy equipment and supplies, but nobody, including myself, would benefit financially. I'm just doing this because I see a need. I've been asked by multiple people of Myersdale if I'd be interested in doing this. So I'm asking if we could use the gym at the community center on Fridays from 10:00 to 12:30. We would just be doing things like basketball, pickleball, games, activities that would promote coordination and all of that for the kids. So is that, any questions?
And you indicated that this is basically nonprofit. There is no charge.
There's no, yes.
Except you may do a collection to get balls, baseballs or basketballs.
Sporting equipment, yep. Yeah, so that's all, it would just be a, just a small fee, just to cover those expenses. But other than that, just doing it because we enjoy a co-op. I, you know, I love to homeschool my kids, but there are unfortunately, you know, some cons to that too, and that is that they're not as socialized and we don't, like I said, get to do things that you could do in a gym class.
Patty, are those times available?
Yeah, Fridays would be okay during the day.
I mean, I think this is a wonderful thing that you would like to do for the children who are homeschooled, come in here and play sports or whatever. I mean, I certainly would be in favor of it at no charge. As we, the baseball teams, the Little League, they come in here, base basketball, and we don't charge them anything. And I would like to suggest that council do this, you know, because it's something for the students that are homeschooled. And so, but that's, let's go around the room and discuss it.
I'm on board.
I'm on board. Yep, I'll make the motion also.
Maybe, what do you think, Joseph?
It's fine with me. I think it's a good idea.
Tom?
No. That's, we're here, that's the June 4th, the community.
Okay, could we have a motion then to allow this? And Patty, you'll work with Patty.
I'll make that one.
Clarence?
I'll make that one.
And Jenny, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And only three minutes, you guys.
Pretty good.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have no other registered guests, so public comment. Guest Brian?
Good evening. Brian Witheray, 23 Sherman Street, Myersdale. I appreciate the young lady identifying herself and saying who she is and for the public record. I think that's important when, you know, you have this type of environment, public meeting, that not everybody knows everybody, and to identify who you are, I think that goes along with it. I didn't know who you were. I wanted to. So I wanted to talk about briefly regarding a meeting. I was in that meeting, it was July 8th, in reference where the ATV, UTV ordinance was amended to talk about it, and then there was a motion to amend the ordinance to include state routes open within the borough. First of all, some of you know, some may not. I'm an individual that I'm certified for ATV, UTV training and instruction in safety operation. I'm on these machines quite a bit with what I do. And I also have been a state instructor for over 20 years on these machines. So I'm very familiar with the laws, the processes within the Commonwealth regarding it. What concerned me was when Mrs. Nagy brought this up, that she said that PennDOT has passed, that they will make our roads open to us. That is not accurate. I spoke with, I'm very familiar with the Commonwealth's processes as far as how permits or permission and conditions are applied or met. I spoke with District 9 out of Holidaysburg regarding it, so I talked to the whole chain of command in reference to it. And basically, I know that they have received an application from the borough, and it's being processed. It is not approved. So what I don't want to see is our police department and our partners in law enforcement to be tasked with people that might have misinformation, that they can go on these roads because the borough has amended an ordinance and PennDOT has provided the green light to go ahead and do that. That is not the case. In fact, there were some questions in reference to the TE 120 report and application that was submitted. And so when I read, watched the meeting minutes online, it said that the county would be filing the report through the planning commission. Not a call, let them do that. However, the question I have were, there's several blocks of this application regarding site data in particular, where it's specific for local landscape of law enforcement. And they ask specific questions. So my question to the council would be, one, did the mayor provide that? Because he's the chief operating officer for the police department as well as council. Did the acting OIC have any input on the data to do that? Because those blanks have to be filled for a successful application to be vetted through that process. So if anybody has any questions on, right here's the application. You know, you can do a right to know to see what our original application was and what information's on there. Because they have to do an engineer's report, they have to do a traffic study, because what the TNE is, is the Road Destination Engineering Traffic Study. That's what that is. All right, I'm all for it. I think it's a great tool. I think it's an opportunity for people to come to our area, patronize our business, our, our beautiful county. I'm very familiar with them, with what I do. But I want everybody to be safe. And PennDOT actually shared some feedback with me that they had some concerns with, especially one part of Business 219, where it turns around the corner before you do in the sheets and buy the monument that little, because part of the, the application, is there any site destination obstacles that could hinder safe operation regarding? So the goal is, hey, we want economic development. I'm all for it. We, we need it. I wanna see Somerset County blue, but before we just say, oh yeah, you can ride Beasley Street, and you can come in Broadway Street, and you can come in through Glade City to, through Cherry Street. Like PennDOT said, you put the par for the horse, so to speak. Before, you know, so the, the process is, they have the application, but they do not have the green light for the borough to open those officially. So I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. So that was as of today. I spoke to them early this afternoon. So that's the latest information on them. So maybe it's a communication thing. Um, I, I encourage the borough, you know, when information is being exchanged and presented, that everybody has that information so that they can digest it in a timely fashion, so that that makes sure preparedness for a meeting, uh, you know, more productive for the community and the, and the seats that you serve. So I just wanted to make that aware. I, I'd be happy to help any way, shape, form. I have spoken to the district attorney's office in reference to this project state or countywide, because of, I don't know, Craig and I haven't talked about it yet, but I have talked to other law enforcement entities within the county. They know I'm an instructor, um, they know I've been in there for quite a while, and how we can maybe educate, um, our communities for safe operation, lawful operation, because we always, we want that. You know, we want everybody to be safe, and we want to bring people in. The other thing I would ask is, um, if this ordinance would conflict with any of your existing ordinances, such as your noise ordinance and also your zoning. I would just think that when you're opening it up for a review, to double check that, because the decimal readings on the, uh, machines, there, it's, it's in statute what they have to be. That might conflict with what your noise ordinance is as established for the borough. So I just wanna make sure, when you have it open for discussion, that, hey, you, you cover all your bases, and if any modifications need to be made while you have it open and, and for an amendment, then you look at all those, those options before, you know, you put it back out.
Okay. Um, could we put on the, I know Mark and I discussed this over the phone before the meeting. Could we put on the agenda?
I was gonna cover it on my report, Jeff.
Okay, so he's gonna speak to that then tonight. Okay, we went over a little bit. Anything else?
That's okay. Give me one of five minutes on the.
This is important.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Public comment continues.
Hello, I'm Deborah Still. I have a question and a comment. So, uh, and I, I maybe wasn't quite listening, but Patty, are you a signatory on that police pension state or document? How can you be a signatory of the answer of state?
I am listed as a signature for, like, if we write a letter to them or something, I can sign, or Jeff can sign, or other people can, the other.
Terry.
To, mainly, they do that. I only do it if there's nobody else.
But you're not selecting the policy and saying how much.
No, I am, I have nothing to do with that.
Okay. I figured that was it, but I just wanted to be sure. Second is just a comment. I know we haven't talked about it, but Karen's sister, uh, passed away on Monday, and I think just as a, a group of humans, we could give her a little bit of grace for not making it to reviewing 200 documents this week. And, uh, her sister was in hospice prior to that, so, um, that's all.
Thank you. Public comment continues.
Oh, Monday, 121 Olinger Street. So I've spent a lot of time in the military. They sent me to every leadership class that was available. And what I learned in that class was, listen to your people. Evaluate if there's an issue. Talk to other leaders, such as the council, and, um, determine there's an issue or a problem. And then you bring up a, uh, you develop a course of action to fix the problem that benefits the unit or the community. Okay? I, I hope you're understanding what I'm saying. The last meeting I was here, and I listened to you tell someone that if they wanna have a word to run for council. And you can go back and look at it, and I, I don't like that, because you're not listening to the people, and you're downgrading them. So as the community members are, comments don't matter because we're not on council yet? Because I don't understand what you said when you told us that our, our comments don't matter. If you wanna comment, run for council. You remember saying that? It's not very, it's not very professional.
It was to me.
So your comments and your actions are not very professional. Now, what happens if I win in November? And I become a council member, and you don't like me? Or I don't agree with you, or I fill out a FOIA request? Are you gonna drown me out of this council because of that, like you're doing to another member? This is my home, Jeff. I've been living in this town for 15 years, and I wanna run for council because I wanna do better for the community. I'm not doing better for you, because I think you should resign as the, the borough council president. It's unbecoming, your behavior as a community leader, the things you do up here at this table. I think we need an adult in that chair. It doesn't, doesn't have to be me, doesn't have to be Karen. It could be any member that comes on the board. But I don't agree with what you're doing, what you're saying, because everyone's word in this room matters. You should be listening to me. You should be listening to these people. And then you guys discuss the issue and make a determination that will best be good for the community, not for Jeff. And I don't know what I'm getting into. People warned me and warned me, don't do it, Bob, don't do it. But you know what? I wanna do better for them. I got nothing to do. My whole life's in service. So that's what I wanna do. But how am I gonna be treated, Jeff? I mean, if you don't like me, or if you, if I disagree with you, then you're gonna make phone calls, we're gonna do this, Bob, to them. I mean, it was very, it's very obvious what happened at the special meeting, what you guys did to Karen. I was at every meeting, or I watched every meeting that had to do with that bathroom, that, uh, family bathroom. And then all of a sudden, it pops up, something that was never talked about, putting it somewhere else. Your distrust, your dislike for that woman is very unprofessional. And if you can't put your personal feelings aside when you come to these meetings to lead the community, then you should resign. If you're gonna treat people with disrespect, treat everybody with disrespect. I don't see you doing it to anybody else but the one person, because you guys hate her. I don't hate her. I don't know her, but she's a friend of mine.
You have a minute to go.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. We need somebody that's gonna support the community, not support what you have in mind. Okay? I don't have an agenda coming in here. I, to be honest with you, I have no idea what I'm getting myself into. But what I wanna do is do for these people. That's what we're supposed to do. Vote for the people by the people, and we're supposed to represent the community, not special interests. And I disagree with some of that, but you guys need to get together and make the right decision, put your personal feelings aside, and listen to that woman, listen to these people, and don't be stubborn about it. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, I'll respond to that during my president's report. I have some things to say there, too. Public comment continues.
I mean, I can't, I really have much to say.
This is you. This is the only time you can talk to me.
Yeah, public comment, come up, give us your name.
Aye.
By the way, Kayla, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to, but.
I'll say, I'll say Ashley Bird. I hope they don't have to. Hi.
Oh.
I'm Ashley Bird. I was, like Kayla, born and raised here, but then I moved away for a few years. I've been back, um, with my husband, married, we have two kids. At the meeting in July, I believe, there was an issue brought up for a fence. That was my property. But I wanted to, my husband and I wanted to apologize, because we have had everything in order. Paperwork, I have the papers here, I may not even be able to see them for anything. But we just built the fence for our kids' safety. We live on Mark Street. It's a very, very bad road to live on, with cars speeding up and down the road. And the issue was our fence connecting to our neighbor's fence. We've had an agreement prior to, um, our permit, and our permit was already given because they okayed the agreement. So on our behalf, I just wanted to apologize for all of that, because an issue shouldn't have been brought up that was made an issue. But I just wanna assure you, we took care of it. We went through the proper steps when we moved here, even before we started the fence. Like I said, we talked to Somerset, and I believe it was the guy who dealt with everything. So again, I just wanna say thank you for listening to everybody about it, but I wanted to apologize for the issues that it caused for you guys, the heart and the headache, you know? That wasn't what we wanted to happen. We just wanted a safe place for our children to play and our dog, be able to be outside.
That's what we deal with all the time. So I'm glad it was resolved.
Yes.
To your satisfaction and.
Yeah, it was all taken care of the day after, actually. I talked to Ed, he's like, we're good to go, we're, everything's good. So, you know, like I said, I just wanna say thank you, though, for, for everything, and listening to the complaint, and we, we took care of it.
Okay, is that it?
That is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Public comment continues. Anybody else? Last Chance Saloon, Denise?
No, no, I was just, she was letting me out.
Okay, public comment is over. And now, um, we're down to the president's report. And I would, uh, first off, I disagree with a number of things that Mr. Munyon said, but I wanna emphasize my report this evening on our, um, public comment policy. Public comment is now over, okay? The ones that are up at this table, and I said this before a year ago, we have been elected, we went out, got the petition signed, and went to the polling place and were elected. I was then subsequently chosen as president. This is your number 10, Bob, and, um, somebody must think I'm doing a good job. Public comment, um, is over. At the July meeting, there were certain individuals in the front row that absolutely were out of control, would not pay any attention to me trying to run the meeting. The president is responsible for running the meeting and subsequently keeping order during the meeting. And I said, I talked to Mayor Shane, is on board with this. We have an officer, and thank you, Officer Craig, for sitting here with us. When public comment is over, that's it. And some of what I was referring to, Mr. Munyon, was things that were said after the public comment. I've never degraded anybody. In fact, we don't have to answer back and forth. We're, it, it's right here in our policy. Council members do not have to speak or answer any questions. I've always engaged. I like to engage back and forth during the public comment time. But this thing, two of the ladies especially, at both meetings, the Ja, July 8th meeting and the special meeting, would not listen. They have no business at that time interrupting the meeting. Now, I'm gonna read some things here from our public comment, uh, policy, and then, uh, we'll see where that goes. Public com, this is according to our policy. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but a couple of highlights. Public comments, uh, comment shall be primarily for residents of the Myersville Borough, Somerset County. Non-residents shall be permitted to speak only if no residents are present or if there is additional time remaining during the public comment period. Individuals get five minutes. Uh, part one D, it shall not be the normal practice of the borough council to give responses or answers to issues or questions raised during the open public comment period, either by council members or employees of the borough. Any questions or issues raised, um, will be referred to appropriate individuals for review and response. And we don't do that. I like to answer the questions publicly. Uh, we've always, this is your number 10, Bob, have always had an open dialogue. We don't have to do that. If we weren't concerned about openness, we sure as heck wouldn't be videotaping these medians, meetings, and I think they're well-received people. I hear how much people in the community love to watch these meetings. Public comment may be stopped at the discretion of the council president or council member chaired in the meeting in the absence of the president if defamatory or slanderous comments are made, and additional comments by the speaker may be disallowed. You took me over the coals, and I respect that. It's, everything you said, you disagree with the way I run things, and that's fine, but I'm sure as hell not gonna resign because you think I should. So you can just get that, forget that. But I respected your opinion. You, you disagree, you think I'm not doing a good job, and I would just say this to you. I've been in Myersdale all my life. I hate to say this, but I'm gonna say it. During my time here, I've been in at least a half a dozen organizations and risen to leadership positions in all of them. The Hospital Board, Masonic Lodge, I'm not gonna name them all, the Pennsylvania Maple Festival, all those organizations, I was leader. Never had a problem. We got through them. Uh, the Alumni Association, uh, the Methodist Church, you know, I was involved. We had to, you know, finally sell our Methodist church because we couldn't afford to keep it up. So when you've accomplished in this town, the organizations that I belong to and have chaired and got through as a leadership position, then maybe I'll listen to a little bit as far as, uh,
It's not about you.
I, I, I'm talking.
It's not about you.
We said it once. Stop, Len, I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you.
I don't need to hear what's in my story, you guys in Myersdale.
I don't, I didn't, Bob, I didn't interrupt you. Let me finish. So what I'm saying is, uh, regarding, to get back to public comment, um, public comment is over now, and to have this going on, asking questions all meeting long, uh, being disrupt, disreputable to some of the council members, it's gonna stop. So public comment is over at this point, and, uh, if a council member calls on an individual, asks a question, then that's different. Brian is gonna give another report here on the MMA. He's entitled to do that. Uh, if Danny Stein has something he wants to say regarding the videotaping of the meeting. But, but as far as the last, the two meetings in July were completely out of control with people speaking up, and it's against our policy. The last thing I'll read here yet in this policy, Bob, is discussions or proceedings to the borough council will not be interrupted by visitors during the course of the agenda. And anything I would have said, which I don't remember exactly what you said I said, we can go back and review the tape. It was said, not during public comment, which is the legal portion, but in, individuals continuing to interrupt the meeting, continuing to cause problems for the council, and in some cases, trying to intimidate, uh, council members on a certain vote regarding where this family room was going to be held. So that's later on the agenda. I don't wanna belabor this on and on, but basically, that's the story. Public comment is over. The mayor's on board. We have an officer here, and, um, I mean, we wanna hear everything the community wants to say during public comment. But you can't have everybody in town coming here, you know. But you can't have everybody in town coming here yelling. If you want to have that position, I'll say it again. Go out, do a write-in campaign in November, run for council, and if you're elected, you'll sit up here and you can speak all during the meeting. You can make the decisions for the community. But to have a few people come in here, Brooke Folk did not run the most efficient meeting, and we're not going to do that here under my presidency. It's as simple as that. So public comment is over. I lift you, give it to me, and I respect it, Bob. But now, I'm done, we're going to go on with the business of the meeting. So again, I'll say it, public comment is over. Mr. Mayor, he's not here tonight, I did indicate, he's working at the gas company, junior council member is not here. The emergency management coordinator, Kevin's not here. Mr. Solicitor, take it away.
I'm going to find the button to hit it. So the couple of things that I want to touch on tonight, first of all, the easiest one is, I do have documentation with DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. The DEP will be the public candidate provider, meaning the portion that the Myersville Borough was supposed to pay. DEP will cover, which I believe is either 20 or 25%. It is a designated amount, so I would ask council to take and make a motion tonight to approve that and sign it to that project.
Could we go ahead and do that right now, Mark? I know that's what we were waiting for. I was on the phone with a gentleman, John, I have his number back at my office from DEP, and we do have an email, and then Mark has some other documentation, so that's what we were waiting for, the solicitor is comfortable with this, and so am I. So could we have a motion to go ahead and sign this agreement? It's for the Army Corps of Engineers. I understand the funding is now available. When they'll start, I can't imagine they'll start anymore this year, but anyway, our next step would be to sign this document. Thank you, Ginny makes it?
I'll second.
And Tom seconds, and all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Your motion has been made and approved, Mr. Solicitor.
And the next issue I want to discuss with the ATV ordinance. Just so we're all on the same page. PennDOT has not approved what we were told they approved. They are considering allowing some usage of some state roadways. The issue that we have right now, and this is the issue that DCNR brought up when it was first passed. We're supposed to have designated roadways, as in trails through the borough. They are not, PennDOT and DCNR, neither of those are in approval of the whole borough being open to that. The issue is we have numerous streets, street crossings, and at different locations that if you were to apply for a highway occupancy permit today, you would not get approved. And that's the lens they look at her, so I do think the borough needs to take some consideration and think about making paths or trails through the borough itself that could accommodate people to be able to, you know, get lodging, to get fuel, to get to other entities like restaurants and those things. And allow that to have a nice flow, because one of the issues that we have, and this is not meant to be disrespectful to our police department, but we do not have a full-time police department. We are supposed to have a full-time review of that, and in other words, to have patrols, we're supposed to have accountants for it. The issue is the county, which does not have an approved system yet, wants to have a trail system. I'm not, I'm not very confident that the county itself can actually come into the borough, patrol those streets for the borough as a trail, because trail designation or not, those are completely different than the trails designations you see when they take over railroads or private roadways. This would be a not, this would be a borough-designated roadway that is a trail. So I really think that we need to take and look and amend that ordinance to meet what the plan should be. I think it would be a good idea for council to take into consideration those that are involved in lodging, those that are involved in restaurants, and those type of business entities, to try and figure out how best to meet that need. We also need to take into consideration the entry points from Summit Township. Because one of the issues we have right now is if you look towards the fairgrounds, it's a state roadway across the castle. If you look out towards the school, it's a state roadway to get into the borough. Now you could come down 11th Avenue, but off the top of my head, I'm not sure that 11th Avenue in Summit Township isn't a approved roadway, we would have to make sure of that. But there would have to be ways to enter, and actually, the other problem we have is we don't have a uniform speed limit area, which comes into play because of sound. And I know this might sound going too far, but you asked me to look into this, and this is what you get. We need to be careful because where these ATVs are running, just the same as any other vehicles in the borough, that the noise needs to be regulated according to where we're at. For example, if they were traveling on Hospital Drive, and they were going up by a Myersville Rehab Center or up by the hospital, you know, it should be a lot more sensitive with respect to noise. Residential areas should be more respectful to noise, which also would limit the speed and other travel. And I know this sounds like a lot, but I think it needs to be done right, it needs to be done well, and then it'll be a lot more productive. The problem that we really have is everybody's reading the portion of the statute in the 75th article as the borough has no liability for this. The borough doesn't have liability for impacting the ordinance. The borough has liability every time that an ATV crosses a roadway that isn't properly designated, that wasn't properly checked, that is not safe, that wasn't properly controlled, there's a whole list of things. The borough does not have a creative unity. So we just need to make sure that when we review it, we actually put some good time and effort into it. I also think it's disrespectful how the current ordinance is done because the current police officers have been trying very hard, and I think doing a good job, of using discretion not to ticket or to, you know, go after people who are riding the ATVs. Because quite frankly, most people riding the ATVs are used to designated trails and not this open system, and it creates real big issues with state roadways and other stuff. So I honestly can't tell you that we can blame those that are using the ATVs in any way, shape, or form. I just think as government, we need to do a better job of properly designating and making sure these are handled properly. The last thing I'll mention is not on ATVs, but it is on the 326 Salisbury Street. Yes, that is up for a tax sale, but that is being taken care of with the county. And it will not go through because it is a condemned property. And I believe Mr. Spohkar told me that this coming week, the demolition is supposed to proceed. I believe that's all I have.
Yeah, I had heard maybe the 14th, August 14th.
I can't remember if he said the 14th or 15th, but...
Yeah, that would be good news, especially for the neighbor beside there, so... Okay, Mark, any council members have any questions for our solicitor? Thank you, sir. Hang in there, we may need you. Continuing on with our agenda, code enforcement, and no one here from PMCA. Committee reports, MMA Municipal Authority, Brian, come on back up and tell us about the water blues.
Good evening again. On behalf of the MMA, we had a workshop on Tuesday night. I had a few members in public there regarding just general business and operations, but we also talked about the water clarity, the condition of our water that's being treated and flowing to our customers here. First and foremost, just want to make sure that everybody understands our, every employee of the MMA is, it's all hands-on though. Everybody has been dedicated to try to find the remedy of why, you know, a lady, because I was with Terry Baker with this on North Street, has a little bit of rust-colored water in her line, and she's sharing that with Terry and I, and literally the neighbor right beside her comes out, and her glass is clear. And so it's been a perplexed situation. We have conducted water tests after water tests, whether it's businesses, residents, all around our customer base in the township, in the borough, and all the tests have come back fine, according to what the DEP regulations are. So that's, that's been like a daily thing that the, our employees are doing. You probably have seen them draining and flushing some additional hydrants on different streets and stuff, just to kind of blow out stuff to try to test it, and they're doing that as well. I gave you an update, I think, last week or earlier this week regarding this, so I've been trying to communicate that with everybody. The Department of Communication, I know we receive feedback on it, our business manager, she gets a lot of feedback on it, whether it's social media platforms or calls, and people just talk, and people calling me, I mean, everybody's passionate about it, and rightfully so. I mean, that's our water. We have to, when you're looking at such a highly regulated thing, such as our water, we want to make sure DEP is giving us the right feedback. The engineers, Eads, is giving us the right feedback. And our field personnel, who are dealing with this daily at the water plant, are giving us everything so that we can decipher it of work with, Mark, you know, Mark represents the authority. Quite a bit regarding this, we wanted to just instead just keep throwing out a newsflash, 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 and then change and change. Because this has been changing like every day. We wanted to make sure we have the accurate stuff before we push out some type of notice to our customers. So I just wanted to make sure we covered that. We have worked with outside resources, such as the, of course, DEP, Eads, Citco, PA Rural Water. They've all been up and down the mountain. I was up on the mountains this morning for an hour or two with everybody. Citco Water Solutions was there. They feel what, what, what we, the crux of the issue, what we believe, and Mark can definitely chime in because he was part of the meeting on Tuesday, is that we had an elevated part of manganese in our water source. Now, we all know earlier this spring, late spring, early summer, we had some unique weather events. A lot of rain in the spring, and we had that horrific event of ore flooding, which impacted everybody in the city. Not everything is an immediate response. So they could have disturbed our aquifer, which is surface water, as everybody knows. And then eventually, when it comes down to town, it, we also have had some high heat events early this summer. So they're contributing to the manganese. Also, people need to keep in mind that the water that you draw today, it took about six days to get down. So from the time it comes off of our source, goes through the filtration, goes through the tags, comes through the lines, travels those miles to town, it takes, you know, around an estimate of about six days to arrive to our customer. So I wanted to share that with you. Terry, Terry's on the mountain right now, that's why he's not here. They've been up there since 6 o'clock this morning. So another major thing that was taking place is that flooding event that we had, it compromised our main line coming down off the mountain to Floccity, which then shoots it in the path. Okay, so the valve was compromised and exposed in the bank and in the bed of Floccity. So we had to have Berkey excavating, and they got the bid, it was approved by the board, to come in and do those repairs, repair that line. So Berkey Excavings been up there. They're finishing it today to repair the main line. And then they were also up there with Citco in the plant to talk about and try to make sure we have this manganese, try to get it under control. My understanding, when Terry texted me around 4:30 today, 4 till 5, that it seemed like they were getting ahead of where we need to be, where the magnesium level should be. Terry has been very proactive, talking to DEP almost daily. So DEP knows of our situation in borough and our customer base. They know that, hey, we're not hiding anything, this is what it is, they've been a part of this especially, they know what our tests are. We're doing everything in our power to make sure that our customers are having clean water. I know it's not fun, because my house is included in it, but you know, one day you have a little discoloration, and another day, my wife's telling me, Brian, look at this. I'm like, I get it. You know, and I know, especially you shared some things at the Tuesday nights meeting. People in the community do. I just wanted to make sure, I'm not trying to make a long report, this is a very important part of what we do. Everybody in this room uses water every day in various capacities. And we want to make sure that we have it covered.
Ryan, just a quick question here. I don't want to interrupt you. The yellow color, is that the magnesium?
Yeah, so the manganese, that's what's causing it. So what's happening from what Terry and the gentleman from Citco was telling me today, it's pretty clear coming into the plant, because I saw the samples that as it's coming into the plant today, there might be a little discoloration, I mean, not much, I mean, like you can see in the masons jar, and it looks pretty clear, but when you look at it, your eyes adjust, it's just a little bit of discoloration, not much at all. It's pretty clear. So that's where we're thinking that that flooding event has compromised a little bit, and it's stirred things, and the high heat, and everything's such a, that's a big chemistry project up here on the mountain, it's that sensitive. So when it's coming into the plant, it gets through the filter and treatment stuff, and then that is working against what's coming in. And then if the manganese level in, going in the plant is compromised with another chemical compound, it just skews things, and you just got to start, you know, the balance is like this, and then finally you start to get here, and then you're getting here, and you're getting closer. So, and it takes time. Because like I said earlier, six days until our water that we're using comes down off the mountain and to our customers. So, and we're in a society, everybody here, you want it now, you want the change now, you want the information now. I appreciate the patience, and to be frank about it, some of the things that have been disseminated on social media in reference to our employees and the board, I'm not so worried about myself. What it is, social media is a double-edged sword. But the, the employees in particular, they are getting up and they are working late. They're, our Bree is building call after call, and it is a lot. And I would ask people to take, you know, a little, give them a little credit. They've earned it, they're working hard on behalf of everybody. And keep in mind, those employees that are serving it, they're here, they live here. Okay, so their customers here, their families here, and they're very passionate about it. So all I ask is that when you see one of them, and they're coming up and talking, and they're flushing the line, or whatever, because some people have made, can't control it publicly, some unprofessional comments to some of our people, take a minute and say, hey, thank you for what you're doing. We know you're trying to figure it out. We appreciate what you're doing, because they, I cannot say that enough. I'm proud of every one of them, they are doing a great job. And they needed a big dose of credit because it's really mentally bore on them throughout this last, basically, three weeks or something, something like that. So Terry says, he's feeling optimistic that we pretty much have it. So just please be patient, but in the event someone has a concern, I would encourage someone to be productive and communicate that with our office. And that'll be dispatched accordingly, and we will handle. So I always ask just a little bit of professionalism from people making this and fires, and then we'll be glad to help out anybody anytime.
So basically, the water's safe to drink?
It is. Yes. And it looks...
Because I don't have it at my house.
Does it, anybody complain about a different taste?
I have not heard that. No, personally, I have not.
I drink a lot of water, but it has a little bit of a different
I have talked to people on Sherman Street, I've talked to people on North Street, Broadway Street. I've talked to a couple, I even went in the Sheets. The lady that's the supervisor for Sheets, she called, Terry couldn't go in, he was up on the mountain, I said, I'll go down. So I went to talk to the manager of Sheets the other day, and, you know, they they may have a different protocol because of their business operations and things, and they have to do what they did. Because there was a period of time that they had their soda system and their coffee system shut down because of discoloration. And I told her what I'm telling everybody here. So, and I said, if your corporate office has any concerns, give us a call. So I didn't hear back from them, but I did stop at Sheets and have a conversation with them. Because they do a lot of business here, obviously, everybody's wanting their coffee or lunch or whatever, maybe getting a beverage off their coffee carts and soda machines. Some of the other, any other questions on it before I hit one more work thing?
Anybody in the room, open up a little public comment here, this is really important. Does anybody have any questions for Brian? Deb, go ahead, please.
I have any questions, I just, I hear everything you're saying, and I've been sort of airly patient. But it is different when you go to bed and breakfast and you've got yellow water coming out of the showers in your toilets. They're coming to a place that they think is clean, and it is clean. and it is clean, but it, you know, it does, every time I explain it to somebody, and I'm like, where's my phone, is there water in your room, is he refreshing tea, you know, they're like, yeah, it's still.
Yeah, I appreciate that, again, you articulated that really well on Tuesday, and I understand your situation. I mean, people complaining, they have that notion of, you know, I get it, I understand that, and we, unfortunately, we are doing everything, and I mean that, I mean.
I believe you, I mean, that's not a question.
And we proved an item of business on Tuesday night to give Terry anything that he needs to do statewide, interstate wise, to bring whoever here to help get this balanced and under control.
That was like three or four weeks after this was started.
Well, I can tell you, we didn't sit on our hands for your reasons, so that's what you're implying, because those guys.
I'm not implying anything, I'm just stating to you that it is different having your business where literally the water is running on white gels than it is, you know.
And if we can control it, be crystal clear.
Walking in your house.
My house is new.
Denise, how do you feel? You have a bed and breakfast also.
I've only had one real incident. So whatever was happening on the mountain the other day with the property, I came in in the morning, there's water running down the street at six o'clock in the morning, and I don't think anything of it. One of my guests sees the water people out doing something, I had very low water pressure on Monday morning, and the water was, the pressure came back by about seven thirty, the water was clearer. I came back into work that day, and I was doing laundry, but the water was finally clear, and something happened between twelve and three o'clock on Monday that my sheets were all brown, because something flushed through, and that property was a muddy mess and coming down. Something happened through it. We didn't call again, but I had to re-launder the sheets three times to try to get it out, and my guest tried to take a shower during that time. And when you have white tubs, they see it. And I have a white basin in my sink, so I test the water every morning. She's probably showing my guest.
Oh, is it your picture still? I thought it was. Yeah, and I've experienced that, that tend initially.
I mean, that is like teacups, I mean, that is either yellow or bad day.
My house has had a bad day as well.
Chuck, shut, cleaned, washed, stale, three times yesterday.
Bad day.
And we ran it all through.
Normal day, but it's still bad. This is what our toilets were made out of.
This is just a great day. Yeah, so.
But we shut it down three times yesterday, we were twelve bathrooms. That was a lot of water and water.
On three days, really?
Yeah.
And any?
Four bathrooms. Um, you know, so that's a lot of water though, and our bill to be cleared every day, and my water bill is like a thousand dollars each quarter. So that's what we have to do. Saying I'm doing laundry, double or triple here.
I am, I am.
So, but I mean, you asked me, I mean, but otherwise, the guests have been really great, and it's a good thing they're kind of quiet right now. But I mean, you know, I do feel that since you flushed the house, and that we're in day six or seven that we're coming down clear, I'm hopeful as you are that.
Yeah, and if I could, if I could change the time Denise, and I understand, my point of view is.
Yeah, I don't know what happened during that day, but something changed from the day. And that was happening.
It seems like Murphy showed up a big time on the MMA regarding that flooding event. The guys have been planning to catch up with a lot of those things because of this.
We're aware of all that. My husband worked in these years, he understands. All the toys just came wired, most of them extreme, you haven't, you know.
Can you, we ought to kind of get moving here, Brian. I know I asked some.
So, just one more thing, and I'm done. So, usually my reports aren't this long, you know. So, but tonight is a unique situation. Thank you for the feedback, Denise, I appreciate that. Couple of projects, so we have a lot of different things with our corrective action plan, and of course, Tony Valentine can correct me or add into this, but we've been, there's some things that we have some deadlines for as we get closer to 2029, the major infrastructure upgrades with our systems in town, our customers. So they are, you know, we're under the regulation for that. I spoke to Senator Stefano last week in person about it. I also had the opportunity to talk to US Senator Pederman and US Senator McCormick's office, and several congressional people on that level last week in person regarding our town and projects that we need, and more importantly, securing funding so that we can get these done, not just for what we currently have here, but we want to try to be proactive and think of a future plan for the development of Myersdale and having a healthy, productive community. So we have, it's been busy, and thank you, I know it's all important.
Thanks, Brian. We appreciate what you do, and you're doing a good job, it's just, you just have to figure it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, street foreman Brian was not able to make it tonight. I think the big thing was, well, the Christmas lights were decorated, delivered today, they must be in pretty big boxes, so he couldn't get them in the basement, they're down in the, our borough shed. You have to stack them a certain way, you can't stack one on top of another, so he did not open them. We have to decide who wants to open them and check for breakage and things like that, but they were delivered today. Myersdale Merchants Association, Mama.
I'll speak real quick. We have a new boardhouse at the end of June, so I'm no longer on the board, however, we are, our enrollment's going well, the farmer's market's going amazing, we secured a couple inventors, which is really great, and then we are going to tour August 23rd, which is our annual fundraiser of the golf house. So that's pretty much what we have going on right now.
Any questions for Denise? Public library, no ones here, community events, Clarence?
We abandoned the gazebo Sunday, Jeff took care of most of that and everything.
Yeah, it went well, I had like thirty-five people, they went around and poured a couple of weed up pretty good. He was helping with that.
And Jeff handled most of that, so thank you.
What upcoming do you have to do? Do we have anything upcoming with that?
We have one for August 31st.
That's the last one, isn't it?
What group is that?
Ellie Bellotti from some place.
What, are they rock?
She's more acoustic.
More music, yeah.
There you go, August 31st?
Yeah.
Anything else, fellas? Jenny, you're on that committee?
Well, I knew there was something else coming up, I just couldn't.
Yeah, I think that is our last. Could you go with that?
Thank you, Clarence, for taking over, you know, for Jenny, she stepped out, she's still on the committee, but I know you're still working together as a team, and it takes some of the pressure off.
She did, like, get out there.
But thank you for doing that, both of you. And Jeff, you're doing a good job. Myersdale Renaissance, okay, the committee members, standing committee, the police mini split, discussed putting this out for bid, and what do we want to do with that? I would say, do we want to hold on this to see if we need it anyways? We're just paid for.
The people that put it in, Patty, Jenny said they'd buy it back.
I don't know, I didn't talk to them.
I thought somebody said.
Maybe they talked to them.
That would be.
Maybe.
Do you know how much it costs?
Probably about a hundred dollars.
So we don't want to give it away.
What's wrong with it?
Nothing.
We just had to, where they put it, it was going to interfere with the windows, right here at his office, so they took it out, and they need a bigger one, it's going to do your office and the police, is that what I understand?
Okay.
We have this one here, but the one we had put in before COVID money wasn't big enough, it was just for the police, and so that's.
Wouldn't we want to look into it before winter comes, so the heat's a little bit more regular?
Well, they're going to put a new one in for the police department, and for Patty's, it'll be a bigger, so.
Okay, so the plans are in force for that, or is it getting rid of this?
Yeah, it wasn't big enough, so can we use it someplace else in the building, I guess, is what, maybe we can just store it for a little bit, till we get this project done and see which, but if you want to sell it, we can put it out for bid.
Okay, just wondering, a little confused, but, got it.
Okay, anything from, sorry, Tom.
All right, it wasn't me. Wrong ring.
Oh, you're talking out loud. Personnel?
We're waiting for fall to meet up with.
You and you.
Thank you. I thought you were listening. Because doesn't contracts come up with the rural employees this year? So I thought that that's what we'll wait till September or something to meet with him and.
I think usually we start in the new year, and like the new council members.
Okay.
Yeah, right, Patty? That's what we did the last time we negotiated the five-weekers, then the new council will take over.
So nothing else from personnel?
Finance, we discussed that, refuse, streets and buildings, are we going to pave any streets? We had talked about, are we going to let that go?
Terry and I and Brian went around a little bit, and we thought we could just hold off this year because it's so late, and then next year we could do twice as many of them.
We'll get more money, right, Patty, from the fuel funds?
Yeah, so we'll do it, move back early.
Is the gas company going to ever fix their mess?
We've been asking.
Steel plates up the street.
Been asking train, no.
Cut off Main Street, Central Street.
They're actually working, talking to us.
Okay, flood control. The only new thing I would have in there, you know, we signed the one document, we have this other grant for $225,000, and DEP suggested that we do a change of scope, which we did. We submitted it to our state senator, Pat Stefano, and I said, basically, the change of scope would be from the riprap down at the bottom of the flood control, the lower end, to cleaning out the upper holding pond. I mean, if you haven't been up there lately, I couldn't believe it. There's all these little saplings coming up through, I think it's worse than what it was when we cleaned it out back in 2018 or 19. So I texted Pat, this is about the second or third time, and this morning he gets right back to you, and he says, good morning, this is about to change of scope now, because we haven't, we applied for it, but we haven't gotten any documentation yet. There are several grants that we have in for the change of scope, and I'm not getting any answers on any of them right now. Seems that nobody is changing anything until all the budget negotiations are completed. And it seems to be sucking all the air out of the room. So I don't have any update for you at this time, but I do check it almost daily to see if we can get an answer. So that's the latest on, we're trying to get this change of scope done so we can utilize that money to clean the upper holding pond, which is more of a concern to the DEP than the riprap. Any questions on that? Hot off the presses today, farmer's market, do we have a report? Somebody said the farmer's market's doing great?
I just gave it with the merchants.
Correct. Okay, so we'll move on. Unfinished business, estimate to repair and upgrade uptown cameras. Evidently, according to Brian Reiber, Lightning had knocked two of these cameras out, and I think it's not going to be real expensive to get these repaired. I can't remember if we made a motion at the IAS meeting to move forward with it, or if that was what we were going to do tonight, Patty, but if not, I would just suggest we go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and get these cameras repaired, they're not doing much good if they're not working. So he seemed to think it would be under $300.
Let me make a motion to repair the.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Tom, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. ADA family restroom and grant applications, and under that, it is engineer update drawings for family restroom placement. So who wants to take this one? We, well, if anybody has anything, we had asked, after our last meeting, I had called and talked to Larry Philip, I mispronounced his name last time, Larry Philip, and he came up with two drawings utilizing the existing ladies restroom. One entrance would be right above the steps going in, either way, we have to cut a hole in the wall. The other, what I believe more popular, entrance would be coming out of the hallway right here and entering, and putting our family restroom, it would encroach upon the hallway or the closet there, and also part of the ladies restroom. Larry feels that doing this, but either of them would be fine, council just has to decide if they want to choose one of these plans this evening and move forward with it, talking to Steve Spohcard, and then seeing if there's any grants available.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification purposes, council did ask me to look into whether or not that the grants that are available would qualify for the room that was formerly the MMA. If you actually read the grant structure of that, you were supposed to be overcoming architectural impediments and repetiments, and that is constructing a new facility, that grant is meant to deal with current facilities and to somehow alter those or change those to accomplish that. So, just so we're all on the same page, doing either of the two that are projected in these drawings would meet that grant standard, but I don't believe that a family stay-out style bathroom in that old MMA portion would meet that standard.
Do you have to take any of the stalls out from here when we're putting this part in?
I think, I think we'll lose one stall in the drawing either way, give me a yes. Thank you, Mark, for that. I think in our July 29th meeting, we were under the exact opposite understanding, that if we did do the MMA office, the grant would be applicable there, but you're saying now it's just the opposite, so we would be, there's another reason then that we're better off to put this family restroom in, associated with the ladies restroom, so.
I think what Steve Spohcard said, because there was a question, could you do both spaces? And the answer is no, not under the grant, because, you know, you're not, you have to alleviate the circumstance, and that alleviation is altering a current bathroom to meet that circumstance. The example he used, I believe, is Conmont Township, they were altering a current bathroom and space to alleviate that circumstance, and the whole idea of the grant is it would otherwise maybe be unaffordable or unattainable without grant funding, so putting it in that other area would be a new structure. It might alleviate an issue, but it doesn't alleviate an architectural issue.
Okay, so.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and put the door in the hallway.
I'll second that.
Patty, roll call vote.
Number two.
Discussion. Any discussion?
This is my only choice, yes.
Okay, do the roll call vote, Patty.
Mr. Rockerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Baker, that's, Mrs. Nagy, that's, Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Panirium?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Yes. Okay, unanimous vote for that, we're going to move forward. We will, I'll let the engineer know tomorrow morning exactly that's the way we want to move forward, we'll talk to Steve Spohcard, the same thing, and if Mark, our solicitor, feels it will be eligible for grants for this, we'll get that moving right away. So I think we made a wise decision and a good decision here tonight. You got that, Patty? Let's kind of try to get out of here now. Zone ordinance review, where are we on that, Mark?
You know, we were supposed to talk about that at the committee meeting, and that committee meeting is not going to happen until probably October, because I believe we're going to, I might be wrong, but I thought we were going to review the proposed budget if Patty has enough time to prepare it in September.
Well, we could, we could probably do the zone, or is it going to take a long time? Is that why you're thinking?
I do, it should not take a long time, but I also, I know that, I'm not trying to speak disrespectfully, but Patty puts a lot of time into the proposed budget, and we go through it, but, you know, we should go through and spend some time looking at the budget, you know, not just because Patty puts that time in, but because of his taxpayer dollars, so I don't want to rush through a budget just to look at zone.
Perfect, and I like that, Mark, thank you for clarifying that, so maybe you could put zoning ordinance review. So maybe you could put zoning ordinance review in the October committee meetings. I guess then we'll have to have a one in October, too, now. Yard waste, where are we on that? That's kind of a subject that we can't find a place to dump yard waste. Does anybody have any solutions to that? 326 Salisbury Street, we discussed that. The building is going to be taken down, I heard the 14th, which is good news. Moving to the last page, you're discussing Pima property buyouts. Was that something Karen indicated?
No, that was something that Pima had reached out and asked to, to meet with the borough. I think we need to contact Pima Bad and meet with them, because that is a program that's available. And, and what it is, it's, everybody's aware, there are a lot of properties, I shouldn't say a lot, but there's a significant number of properties in the borough that were drastically affected by flooding, have been affected by flooding in the past. They do not qualify to be relieved of that even by flood insurance, and the buyout program is meant to buy out their property at a, at a very pro-seller price, and to allow them to be able to relocate so that they don't have to live in a flood plain or flood plain and not have to deal with that continuous onslaught of flooding issue. Now, in saying that, the borough also in conjunction will be required to update our zoning ordinance and, and our use plan to reflect what the flood plain and flood ban is. Remember, in 2007, and, and then again, oh, I can't remember if it was 2018, but there have been several times in recent history where Pima and FEMA have changed where the flood plain is at. The flood plain has actually increased in size. So that is something we need to do, because if the borough doesn't do that, it could have a dramatic effect on, on evaluation of people's homes, but it could have...
Thank you, Mark.
...ability to get insurance.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, new business, any announcements? We did get a resignation, the zoning board, Tom Deakins, and I actually misspoke at the last council meeting and said that his term expired 2026. It does go to 2027. So we have two alternates on there. We had just advertised for the position, which we, go ahead, Mark.
The function of an alternate is to step forward. So we already have two alternates, and what, what council should do is, at this time, appoint one of those two alternates to step forward into that position. The other alternate will remain an alternate, and, you know, the, the council then can, at its discretion, advertise for additional alternative alternatives.
I, I would indicate, the two alternates are Jeff Brenneman and Sarah Jones. I did speak with Sarah Jones, and she did indicate that she would be willing to allow her name to be moved up or could be voted on to fill in Tom Deacon's position. So, you know, we just advertised for Leigh Anne Renzi's position, what, a month ago, Patty, two months ago? Nobody applied. I had, had to get in touch with Leigh Anne, and very graciously, she admitted, said that she would go ahead, yes, she would serve again. So we put her on. But to, to re-advertise this after we just advertised for a position, when we have somebody on the alternate that was approved and voted on, if the solicitor's okay with it, I would just suggest that we go ahead and vote to move Sarah into Tom Deacon's position, which expires in July of 2027. Discussion.
It expires, I think, because letter of resignation says effective with the date above, which is July 11, 2025.
That's the date that he resigned, but then, see, I, I originally thought it was 2020. See, Eric, my nephew, he expires in 2026, but, but Tom must have been just appointed, so he's 2027. So that's what we're voting on to fill this position.
Should you vote to accept his resignation first?
We should do that, yes, Patty. Could we have a motion to accept? Thank you. Could we have a motion to accept?
I'll second that.
Okay, Tom and Clarence, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Patty, it was, it was wrong. Clarence, I'm sorry. You got that? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Could we have a motion?
I make a motion to put Sarah...
Second.
Okay. Jenny and Tom, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, and newly recorded. Now Karen, I think, had asked to put War Memorial Doughboy area on, I'm not sure. I know our borough workers have been taking care of that, it looks pretty nice. Brian and his crew, they polished everything up. Just a couple days ago, it hadn't been working, so I'm not sure if there's anything else. Like I say, Karen had asked to have that put on, and she's not here. And then grants, she had asked that. So I would just let those carry over. Do you have something on grants, Mark?
Yeah, Karen had mentioned to me, and, and I, I haven't had time to fully get into it, and I apologize. She had mentioned to me that something about grants available, and it deals with distribution. I believe, the emails were sent out to the group, but I, I, I don't know, I think those applications are planned or due. I, I don't really have any details on that, and I don't know what is really required. I don't know if anybody else does.
I would maybe say leave it on for the September meeting. I don't really know what she had in mind either. Okay, goals for the current year, the flood control, riprap, that's ongoing. Any additional items for discussion? We'll go around the table, let everybody, any final closing comments? We'll start with me tonight, and I have none. Wrong, I have none. Tom?
No, I think, as far as the Doughboy, I thought the Lions club was taking care of that.
They were one time. I think...
Actually, the MMA takes care of it now. Brian?
And some of our, I, I think it's kind of a hybrid, like everybody pictures, and there was one time, right by the lion. I know the MMA employees have helped over the years with that as well, and, and I've seen the borough staff up there. So I think it's kind of a hybrid. It's nice to see it be that headed, too, and, because it's a focal point of the community. Where are the Lions?
Jenny? Clarence?
Nothing. I'm glad Brian came, though, it was interacting with the water, because...
Yeah, I think a lot of people will watch this and glean information from your report. It was a good report.
Yeah.
Brian, thank you very much. It is a 36. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
Okay, Clarence and Jenny, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Dan, take us home.